Well, welcome, everybody. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton. Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Studs.
Here.
Butts. Four present, two absent. Thank you. First up, we've got our quarterly report. Alicia, welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Alicia McAndrews. Joined you this afternoon to present on our second quarterly report for 2025. This is covering the period of January through March. So this provides an overview of the city's financial health through the first half of the fiscal year. Overall, I'm pleased to report that the city's general fund revenues and expenditures are tracking within the expected ranges. In the upcoming slides, I'll provide an overview of the revenues and expenditures and highlight some key economic indicators. So looking at the general fund revenues, they are generally within the expected ranges, with 49% of budgeted revenues received by the end of quarter two, which is comparable to prior years for the second quarter. Property tax, our largest revenue source, is on track to meet the budgeted level, with the second property tax distribution expected in July of this year. Development fees are performing strongly this year, exceeding budget expectations primarily due to large commercial development projects. Sales tax is performing as expected, and liquor tax, as we previously discussed, is below projections due to a decline in statewide consumption and related alcohol sales. So moving now to general fund expenditures, spending is slightly below the projected level based on calendar days, with 47.7% of the budget expended, but overall within the expected range for quarter two. Personnel costs are slightly underspent compared to par level. This is due to vacancy rates, which are just about 5.5%, which is down slightly from quarter one, which was 6.9%, but that is also down from 7.13% in quarter two of 2024. These vacancy savings were partially offset by overtime and one-time compensation payments that happened earlier in the fiscal year. Maintenance and operations spending was slightly below the benchmark, but still within the expected range for quarter two. Some maintenance and operation categories, such as software and system maintenance, building and grounds maintenance, and vehicle maintenance, were expended above the 50% benchmark. Meanwhile, there are other categories like fuel and professional services, which were below our mid-year budget target. So turning to our economic environment, Boise's unemployment rate is 3.4% and favorably below both the state and national figures that you can see here. And then, just looking overall, kind of an economic summary, while there is some general economic uncertainty, the other economic indicators more locally that we track are quite stable. So total Boise employment is up 2.1% compared to March 2024. We've added 2,800 jobs. Airport traffic remains strong, and, as I said, vacancy levels have decreased. So overall, this report shows that our general fund revenues and expenditures are projected to be at about budgeted levels, except with that declining liquor tax that I mentioned. So we'll continue to monitor these areas closely and report in Q3 any changes. So Madam Mayor, council members, happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Alicia? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, wait, did you?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I guess I will now. Alicia, thank you so much for this presentation. I think it's really helpful to track where we're at mid-year, and the information you have is really good in how it's bucketed out. Just a question with the liquor tax going down. I think we heard this last year, too, and just want to make sure we're revising probably our next-year budget to make sure we're counting for that and putting some lower projections in our budget.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss. Yes, we are in our FY '26 budget. We have reduced our budget assumptions.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
All righty, next up, we've got Christine Miller here to go through some risk, provide a risk and safety update, and some of this is in response to some of the questions that we had during the budget work session a couple weeks ago. Welcome, Christine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So today's discussion, I'm going to do a little deeper background and context setting than we've done in the past, and I hope that will get to some of the nuts and bolts of your questions. So we will start out with that, and then I'll review our strategy and more specifics on the proposed investments for FY '26. So as we've talked about before, when we think about risk and safety, really, it's kind of two looks that we are taking at it. The first look being proactive and really trying to mitigate any liabilities or exposures that we might have, while also maintaining the flexibility that we need to be able to address issues that will inevitably come up. And when we think about kind of the two buckets for risk and safety, really what we're looking at are our assets and our people. So when we talk about assets, we're talking about physical things that we love about the city, things like parks, miles of green belt, actual city facilities or buildings, all of the infrastructure that we have under the streets, like sewer lines or our water renewal facilities, airport facilities. But then we're also talking about technology infrastructure and our data assets. On the people side of things, we are primarily thinking about either staff or public injuries. That's where claims tend to come from on the people's side, employment claims, and then also critical incidents when we think about public safety interactions with the public. And we have two different buckets of money that we think about, back to thinking about people and assets. Our workers' comp fund, when we look at that and are making projections, working with our insurers and the actuaries, things that we're looking at as we're calculating what we need to go in that fund are things like how many employees we have, what their wages are. We, in the past, have been impacted by public safety legislative changes that impact how workers' comp, what it covers, and what we might be liable for paying out, which we'll talk more about when we look at the fund history over time. And then we're also simply looking at market factors, like the cost of medical care, should there be a workers' comp claim. The other bucket of money, or the other fund that we're looking at, is the risk fund. That is things, if we have more property, more assets, there's just more likelihood of something happening, us needing to replace that if something happens. We're looking at cost of injury claims or severity of injury claims. And then, in kind of the market, the insurance market, we're also looking at national trends like increased catastrophic claims. So as we see trends, like we see in other insurance places, right, if there are a bunch of wildfires, or if there are a heavy hurricane season, right, like those types of insurance rates go up, we see the similar thing in the risk fund. And the bottom line is, all of this is really, if there's more risk exposure for insurance companies, they pass that on to us in the form of higher rates or asking us to hold more money in either our workers' comp or our risk funds to cover an incident should we have one. This is a slide that might look familiar to you all. I think it's been in a few budget presentations. But in addition to looking at those fund balances that we have to maintain funding in, we're also looking at our insurance costs. So this graph represents the cost of insurance. FY '25 is about the middle of the chart there, looking back 10 years and then projecting forward 10 years. What you see on the left axis is the actual millions of dollars cost to the city, and then on the right, you're looking at the percentage of the general fund that that increase would represent. And really, the take-home point here is, we don't want to see that steep of an increase curve, because this is a kind of a have-to-do cost category, not one that's a big value add for our residents. So this is a curve that we want to try to flatten out, not just kind of sit back and watch it go up. All right, here's where we get into the technical speak. So those fund balances that we were talking about before, that workers' comp fund and that risk fund, the way that our insurance works is we're obligated to retain amounts of money in those funds that allow us to meet what we call the self-insured retention. So basically, that's a dollar amount that we, the city, are responsible for paying out before our insurance would kick in. And so we're just going to use round numbers here. For example, if our self-insured retention rate on one of our insurance policies is $1 million, that would mean that the city would have to pay $1 million on a claim before the insurance would kick in. And actuaries want us to have somewhere between five and 10 times that amount held in reserve in those funds to be able to cover that potential cost. So again, big, lumpy, bottom-line numbers. If our insurance policy had a $1 million self-insured retention, then our actuaries with our insurance companies would want to see somewhere between $5 million and $10 million for us to have what would be considered a healthy fund surplus, excuse me, easy for me to say, a healthy fund surplus to self-insured retention ratio. That was a meaty little slide. So how are we doing on that? So on this chart, the green dotted lines represent that ratio of either five or 10. So what we're aiming to do is get our blue line, which is our fund balance, we want that blue line to be somewhere between those two dashed green lines. And in our workers' comp fund, you can see that we were doing pretty well there, 2010, 2012, took a little dip, got back up above into that kind of green zone in 2016, and then have fallen below that. And there are several factors that play into that. Between 2016 and 2018, where we see that biggest dip, there was some legislative action that the state took related to public safety employees. In 2016, they passed a presumptive illness bill. That means that now our workers' comp fund is liable specifically for fire employees that may develop cancer, so that is now presumptively linked as a job hazard and would therefore be eligible for workers' comp claims. After that legislation was passed, we had a couple of large claims that drew down the fund balance. And also, just after that, in FY '19, the legislature passed another bill related to post-traumatic stress injuries that then made those eligible in a different way for workers' comp payout. And that caused our insurance, back to that SIR, that self-insured retention, our insurance policy then said, instead of that being $500,000 that the city was responsible for before the insurance kicked in, that went up to $2 million, again because of that increased risk that we were now carrying. So we have been addressing this over recent fiscal years and trying to get that blue line back up in between those green hash marks by a combination of making one-time transfers to this fund, and then also increasing just an annual reimbursement rate, where the general fund just kicks in a certain percentage back into that fund to keep it between those green dash lines like our actuaries want it. Moving on, very similar slide, now we're just looking at the risk side. So very similar trends here. That dip that you see after 2022 had to do with some claims that were paid out, and as a result, we, more risk to the insurance company equals more self-insured retention requirements, so that bumped up from, I believe I have an error on that slide, sorry, I believe it was supposed to be $500,000 to $750,000, which then means that it takes more in that bucket to keep us between the 5 to 10 ratio. And again, we've taken a similar strategy in the past here, trying to make one-time transfers to this fund in addition to higher percentage reimbursement rates. So I believe that the question that I am returning here to try to answer is why we were, staff were recommending an ongoing contribution to these funds. The reason for that ongoing transfer is we have been trying to do that just on a year-by-year basis, but when we really step back and look at that, we think realistically, that ongoing transfer is going to be needed to keep those funds stable where we want them to be. Any questions on that before I move forward?
Madam Mayor. Question here. Maybe I need more education if it's a bad question, but in terms of seeing more cost to our workers' compensation fund because of it being able to take care of these other issues, did that cause any kind of impact on our healthcare costs, on the healthcare side? Did that stay the same or come down at all?
Madam Mayor, council member, I think that's a great question. The city hasn't yet addressed that. So in effect, what happened, I think you're picking up on a great theme here, in effect, what happened is the risk or where those dollars are, those dollars used to come out of the Public Safety Healthcare Trust, but because of that legislation, now those costs are borne by workers' comp. So I think that is something we should keep an eye on and potentially explore as we move forward. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for this information. Can we back up one slide? I just have a clarifying question. Oh, no, I guess one after this is on the workers' comp, right here. So when we increased the SIR from 500K to 2 million in fiscal '22, is that 2 million per incident?
Correct.
Correct. I got that right. And then, do we know what we have today in those fund balances for both of them, for workers' comp and also for risk?
So I don't have today's balance, I'm sorry. I can follow up with that. What I do have is the balances as of the beginning of the fiscal year.
That'd be perfect.
So the balance at the beginning of the fiscal year for workers' comp was 9.6 million, and the balance in the risk fund at the beginning of the fiscal year was right about 4 million.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I'm happy to follow up with today's numbers.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, to see what's been paid out so far this fiscal year.
That looks like, okay.
Great. Okay. So then, on to kind of the strategy for dealing with this moving forward. As I said initially, we really want to take not just a reactive approach to this and keep putting money into these funds. But last time I visited with you all about this, we really talked about the city's proactive approach at mitigating some of these risks, so that we weren't just watching those numbers go up and up and up. So I want to revisit that with you briefly, and then go back specifically to the funding and the investments that are proposed for FY '26. Pretty basic matrix, but I think a picture is worth a thousand words here. Again, when we're looking at risk evaluation, really what we're looking at is the likelihood of a risk and then kind of the severity of the impact. And so as staff is looking at this, thinking about ways that we can mitigate risk or where we should focus our time and energy, we really are looking towards the top of that. So where do we have things that are like very likely to happen or where the severity of the impact is greatest? How do we bring as much of that red or orange down into the yellow or green categories as we can? And so we have implemented this year a performance management approach to that, so we are talking about this every month when we're meeting with department heads. We actually have set metrics and targets for measuring some of these things, where we think we can either reduce the likelihood or reduce the severity of a risk, and it is having an impact already, just a few months in. So areas that we're looking at, again, are proactively identifying risks, doing as much training and prevention as we can, and then setting those goals and measures and tracking those on a month-by-month basis to do whatever we can in areas that we can control. We are one month into this new program, and we were really happy to see that in our first monthly scorecard, most of our areas were nice and green, so all those things that we said we were going to work on, actually, we were meeting in a positive way. But we did identify two areas that were in the yellow, and we are working over the next quarter to reduce anywhere that we have facility inspection deficits. So if we go out, inspect one of our own facilities, and there's a fire hazard, or there's a trip hazard, or any of those, we realized that we weren't turning those around as quickly as we could, so we've set a more aggressive goal for that, and we'll be tracking against it. And whenever we're talking about risk, we're going to talk about cybersecurity. So we also had some places where we found we could shore up our cybersecurity training, and those are two kind of high-risk areas that we feel like we have quite a bit of control over. So we will continue doing those monthly scorecards, reviewing those with leadership, and then each quarter, we'll be doing a deep dive with the entire leadership team. And then, on to proposed investments, again, kind of thinking as a two-pronged approach here. There are several items that are proposed, as we spoke with you during the budget workshop, that are really proactive or mitigation measures. There are a couple of forestry positions in parks that I know we had a bit of conversation about. Those are really looking to mitigate risks of the beautiful city of trees having falling limbs. You'd be, I think you all see claims come across quite frequently after a big storm, so we want to make sure we're staying on top of that. There's a good investment being made in the police department's technology and optimization, so that has to do with things that we can use for less lethal force, so that we have less critical incidents. I already spoke about facility safety assessments, there's some additional funding in there to shore some of those up. And then, I think a huge theme that we heard in the budget workshop was really making sure that we're staying on top of major repairs and maintenance. So again, a significant, ongoing allocation to the capital fund to make sure that we're not just doing new things, but investing in our existing assets and keeping them in good working order. And then finally, the topic that we talked most about, and I think the main driver of this question, staff is recommending an ongoing $1.5 million annual investment to workers' comp and risk funds to make sure that we're keeping that blue line between those two green hash lines or maintaining that self-insured retention to surplus ratio. So with that, I'll stand for any last questions.
Madam Mayor. This is just a comment. I really appreciate your whole team taking a look to see, hey, how do we get in front of these things and proactively take a look at monitoring facilities, cybersecurity, or whatever that may be, and measuring this and see what comes out and what can be improved? I think that's a great approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, my only feedback would be if there's any way that we can continuously improve that long name, yeah, or an acronym or something like that, but that's, I also want to thank you for that presentation.
Madam Mayor, council member, I may have practiced that a few times, and I still stumbled on it.
Yeah, I don't know if risk reserves or something simpler is out there, but that
All righty, and Haley's up next with an update on our water renewal planning.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of council, back today with a continued update on water renewal services and a tie into some of our planning pieces, the ongoing projects, and then tie into the budget process as well. I just told you that. Wanted to start a little bit today with some of the planning considerations and current conditions that we're experiencing that feed into those projects, and then close out again with kind of the funding piece. Feel like an obligation to include this. When we talk about water renewal services, it's multiple facilities, over 1,000 miles of pipe, 29 lift stations. We serve three communities, about 30 million gallons per day of treatment right now. That's really the focus of this work. Multiple facilities and components, we got to take a little field trip out to the phosphorus removal facility last week, so nice to have an updated water quality photo there. But as we're thinking about the resiliency of our system and the ongoing planning it is for all of these pieces and the ones we can't readily see, like the collection system and our underground infrastructure as well. And as we talk about what those priorities are, how we, as the city, are investing in the system, some of those are certainly driven by city priorities, but also community expectations. We'll come back to each of these, but our ability to support our community through growth and meeting the need for new homes and residences, industries, having sufficient capacity in time that we need it, complying with current regulations and planning for future regulations, maintaining the existing infrastructure that we have, and then certainly the investment in keeping our water local and building out not just increased capacity for our system, but also resiliency for climate change and drought. So these are really anchor tenants that we come back to as we think about how we're prioritizing investments and what it is that we're doing. Said a little bit differently, these are industry-wide challenges. So in its simplest form, it's the condition of our system, the capacity we have to move and treat and discharge water, and regulatory requirements. Our facilities are aging. We've got one that was built more than 75 years ago, one that's coming up on 50 years, and then our collection system has some sections of pipe that are as old as from 1897, but certainly not the vast majority. That was more of a fun fact. The availability of federal funding to invest in our system is also one of the challenges that utilities across the country are seeing. The original investment in those treatment facilities was founded in kind of Clean Water Act and federal funding to start that, and we're now at a point where ongoing growth and investment in those replacements are really borne by our community through our rates and fees specific to water renewal. And we're also seeing increasing regulation, both in the numbers of things that are regulated and the level, like how low those levels are, the stringency of those, and those are sometimes in competition for themselves. So we may add treatment for a particular constituent, but that then consumes some of our capacity to treat overall. So we're seeing some conflicting topics here, and then certainly overlaid with all of this is continuous workforce and contractor, construction market challenges that we see specific to Boise. On the most simple timeline graphic, kind of the takeaway on this slide, each of the dots represents a major point of investment in our system over time. So from 1950 until now, whether that was a capacity project, bringing on a new facility, really in those early stages, maybe a response to new regulatory requirements or upgrading the condition of our system, we were often seeing those one at a time, and really for the first 50 years, it might be one in a decade or so. If we look at the far right side of this, kind of in the last 15 years, I don't know if I'm lost, there we go, we're really seeing many of these occur simultaneously, and not, so both in time but also at the same time. So we're facing all of these challenges at once, which is again informing the complexity of the investments that are required in the system. That piece with kind of each of those things happening, this is a graphic representing kind of major cost centers, major costs to utilities on a national scale. So the orange line at the top there is the cost of chemical, the blue is cost of power, and then the red is construction cost. This is a national look. Certainly, there are some unique components to us locally and regionally, but most specifically on that red line for construction cost changes, particularly since 2020, is a 50% increase in construction costs. That's amplified in our local market with the amount of That's amplified in our local market with the amount of construction here. So it's actually a bit higher in the Northwest and in Boise, really balancing kind of these increasing challenges and pressures on the system with also increasing costs to deliver the work for those construction projects. But I wanted to spend just a little bit of time to talk about how we're adjusting and then I'll, I'll get into the, the current projects update as well. So when we talk about kind of that challenge we're facing with construction costs, we have had some areas where we've reduced the scope of the project. We're, we're building less or designing and building less than what we had anticipated. We have deferred some projects so that we can look at alternatives that may allow us a different, maybe it's a phased approach or a different type of investment to achieve the same outcome. And then also looking at some innovative approaches on our regulatory strategy that allows us to provide some flexibility there as well. As we see some of these changes in what we're building or when or how much of it, we, we are taking on some additional risk by, by having those deferrals or changes in scope, but doing that in a way that's, that's measured so that we can kind of track that over time. I think I mentioned this last time, we've added program management to each of our facilities to allow us to really invest and kind of build this infrastructure as a portfolio of projects. That does allow some efficiency in how we're doing things and we're changing some of those contracting mechanisms. With the availability of materials and labor and the kind of what's happening in our market, we've built out different levels of risk registers to help us identify where things may have cost or schedule impacts. And then allowing that or having that inform kind of an early purchase strategy for things like equipment that we could get some cost and schedule certainty early to inform and kind of unlock other parts of the project. With our operating costs, I think we've mentioned this before that we've gone through and kind of scrubbed those operating costs for the next budget for FY26 and identified some savings and started a more formal technology plan to look for places where we can have both some savings on that technology, but also use technology in a way that allows for efficiency in our work. We're early stages in that. And then finally updating, we did a real big update on the cost of service update in alignment with the utility plan in around 2020. And we're working on updating that again to ensure that the costs for our treatment are then aligned with how and who is paying for which portions. That's the cost of service study allows us to attribute those out and our financial team is working on that as well right now. So I just, I guess maybe a pause there, there are multiple pieces that we're doing to kind of adjust to those challenges that I mentioned. And, and then part of that is being adaptive in how we're planning. So this is a cycle really showing the way that we go through sort of generically identifying this is labeled as a problem, but identifying a need that could be a response to a regulatory requirement or that we need capacity or it could be the condition of a piece of equipment. As we go through this circle here, we'll identify the projects that are necessary to respond to that problem. That gets into our capital plan and into the budget cycle. As that's funded, those projects go into execution. Once we're building a project that responds to one of those needs, then we can do kind of a gap analysis and see, okay, what's next? What else is, what else are we identifying? And we sort of go back into that adaptive planning. So sometimes when these externalities change, that may adjust what this adaptive planning looks like. So an example of that, you know, we did our utility plan in 2020, starting here. That identified the need for some secondary treatment process expansion at West Boise. That's into designing construction now. So we know that's coming as a solution in our system. And it allows us to now update what are the bottlenecks in the system that are next. And we're doing, working through that with an anticipated utility plan update. So this adaptive nature of our planning process and the delivery work lets us be responsive to some of those externalities that I mentioned before. And then this is a simple pie chart, but this is capturing the overall capital investment in the 10 year plan, but showing it by the drivers of the investment. And really the intent here is to say, I mentioned those drivers and challenges that we're experiencing for the utility and for the city upfront. We have projects underway to address all of those. And in many cases, a project is not only capacity or only condition, it's solving multiple challenges for us. So we're investing in a narration basin that provides capacity and meets regulatory requirements. So we're looking for those projects that also solve multiple challenges and that we're investing in each of those areas that I mentioned before. So I'll do just a quick walkthrough of each of the facilities on kind of current state and where we're headed. So this is an aerial of Lander Street. We've got the river here and Veterans Memorial Parkway over here. The items noted in green are complete. That was our phase one work with the headworks project and the ultraviolet disinfection, as well as the secondary access off of Veterans Memorial Parkway. Currently we're into phase two, which is the work shown in blue. So we've done some of the early demolition and site civil work and headed into some capacity expansion with new clarifiers. So the, the tanks upfront to settle things out and then some after our biological treatment process as well as fermentation, which is a process to, to augment adding carbon into our system to augment that biological nutrient removal. So those projects are underway right now. And then in the future, our job at these facilities is to collect the used water and then separate out the water and the solids and treat both of those. We talk a lot about the water treatment process as it moves through and what we're doing with that water. The pieces shown in orange here are where we're headed. So there are capacity needs and treatment needs that will be coming on the, the solids management. And those will be the next pieces at Lander Street. Okay, a little shift in orientation here. This is West Boise. So the river is at the top of the screen here. Currently underway right now are the blue and the orange project. So we do have an expansion to our, our secondary treatment system, which is really the kind of the heart of the treatment. That's where the biological processes are. So we're adding basin capacity there so we can treat more and also have some additional reliability in that system and some other kind of adjacent components with that. And then an expansion of the ultraviolet disinfection system as well with future phosphorus removal tertiary treatment investments coming. We've talked a lot about recycled water, but this is a, a big investment in capacity. So it adds a substantial chunk of capacity to our system as well as diversifying where the water can go. So we have some flexibility there in places for the water to go and adds a water kind of for industrial reuse and groundwater recharge in the future. I think you all know we've purchased the, the property for that and we're under, underway in the contracting with a, with our construction manager, general contractor and in design for that work. And I think last time I, I talked a little bit about the collection system projects for today. Wanted to talk about the lift stations. So these are the, the pumping stations throughout the community that lift the water up. So it can then either flow by gravity or under pressure to our facilities. We've done an analysis of those lift stations and have prioritized lists of projects that are based on some electrical improvements, some safety. Some of it's related to communications. So we can see how the lift stations are working when we're not physically at the site. And working with engineering and our operations teams are working through those projects. I think the top picture here is with our controls team out there getting the first rebuild project started up, but working systematically through those to ensure that we've got the same investments happening in our lift stations and collection system as well. Okay, pause. Wanted to, as we, I guess maybe before we go to the next piece of this, are there any questions on the projects before I jump into the kind of financial update? Or specifics that folks were looking for?
Madam Mayor, thank you very much for the presentation. It's always good to see and to get kind of an understanding of some of the challenges that we have. Haley, I have a couple of questions for you and it was a few slides back, but when you guys are talking about how we have increased costs, we didn't anticipate with projects. Maybe we bit them out a while ago and now we're seeing with constructions and materials, those costs. One of the things you guys said you were looking at was kind of reducing the dependence on contractors. Is that right? Is that looking at bringing some of those professions in-house or consolidation? And just wonder if you can give us an idea on that. And then second, for the regulatory compliances, I think a lot of us aren't really aware of who's making those and what kind of regulatory compliances we have. If maybe you can state one or two examples.
Please, please let us know if it's us too.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, on the service or kind of work that we're looking to bring in house, it's across the board. That specific bullet, we utilize consulting, engineering or other companies for a wide variety of things. It's often in its simplest form, if we have a skillset that we don't have in-house and we can access outside of our work or if we need additional capacity, we need some staff capacity to support work. Certainly with some of our big design work, we'll continue to utilize consulting companies. Some of the things we've brought in-house across the board, some of that early planning work and our ability to analyze like our, the flows and loads of our system and bringing in some of that analytic work into the planning. But also at our facilities, we've been doing some more of our construction work, some of the demolition, some of the projects are coming in-house. So that's more on the construction side that we're seeing a staff capacity to be able to do. And, and both with like a technical capability and enough people to be able to do some of that work. So there's a couple of places where we're really seeing efficiencies in our staff ability to do work. And that's been, that's been great and I think really rewarding for the teams who are doing those as well. And that could be, we could certainly add more to that down the road. I think to the question on regulatory requirements, this one could be its own presentation. I did take some regulatory slides out of here considering time, but we have a few layers of those regulatory requirements. Predominantly it's the Clean Water Act at the federal level. Those, the Clean Water Act and then the water quality standards and things that are encompassed within that are rolled into the state rulemaking and state rules. And so currently the Department of Environmental Quality is the regulatory entity that, that issues our discharge permit. So we have a permit at each of our facilities to discharge to the Boise River. Those are typically five-year permits. And then in the intervening periods, as the federal water quality standards change, those are incorporated into the state rulemaking and then those come into our permit. So we typically have a little bit of a lens of what could be coming. And some of that is then predicated on what is the timing of the rulemaking process at the state level? And then when is our permit renewal happen? So some examples of that would be ammonia. We've had ammonia limits in the past. We currently don't have any ammonia limits, but we are anticipating future ammonia limits that are driven by a very sensitive species that lives in the water by snails and mussels that live in the river. And that will bring the ammonia limits much lower than they have been in the past. And so we don't have that currently, but we can see that that's coming. So that's more on the future regulatory kind of planning considerations. From a current standpoint phosphorus, so there's a regulatory limit placed on the river and each of the dischargers to the river have an amount that we're allowed to discharge. And then those, that amount is written into our permit as well. So that gives us our limits and a timeline that we have to meet those. So that's kind of, that's driving some of the current investment as well. So that's a couple of examples. Happy to bring back more, but that might be good for today. Yeah. All right. Oh, I'll continue. Wanted to touch base, I think this was one of the specific questions on the, the funding and how the funds are currently being used. So to flashback a little bit during the utility plan update, we also developed a long-term financial plan to go with that and really focus that on balancing user rates and the potential of taking on debt to get to that intergenerational equity on who pays. In November of 2021, we had a bond election that passed at an 81% voter approval to allow the city to take on up to $570 million of debt to use that bond funding to then pay for this infrastructure that we're talking about. So that's kind of the where we've been. What that looks like as far as that bond authorization and utilization, we have the $570 million authorization. That's then split between $399 million authorization or allocation under WIFIA. So that's a loan through the federal government, low interest loan with some different and maybe more flexible terms than the, the other bond allocation. So if we split that out, we've got the WIFIA loan and then the other bond allocation. And then the way that we are using that currently, we, our first loan with WIFIA is $264 million. That's the, the initial piece of that. We've drawn 40 million of that, 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 the terms of that allows that to be more flexible where we're authorized a certain amount, but we don't have to draw it until we need it. So that's why you see the difference there in the projects. And then we have, I can't see that color, if there 80 million issued on the other side and of that 70 million has been spent. And then the other two are pending. So the financial team that's running those financial analyses really determines when is the right time and when do we need to access the remainder of that bond financing? And the WIFIA loans are, are funding parts of recycled water of the West Boise projects, of the Lander Street projects and some collection system projects as well. So there are component pieces of those. And then of course with WIFIA, we do have the federal funding requirements and pieces that have come with that that we ensure that we're meeting and tracking so that we can have the, the flexibility of that funding stream as well.
Madam Mayor, Haley, do we have an idea when we anticipate these funds to be exhausted or projects completed? Or is this, what's the horizon on that?
Madam Mayor, Council President, the anticipated timeline of when this was started was the kind of 10 year window. And I think there's a longer term for, it's a 30 year. Yeah. Okay. So expect, expected to spend it by 2030, but then it's a 30 year funding horizon. And the financial planning that's underway does not anticipate additional bond financing currently. It does. But TBD on what that is, not, not for the FY26 financial.
And forgive me if you've touched on this, but it seems like one of the problems we're running into in some of our capital planning is that our property tax growth is not keeping up with the rate of inflation on construction projects. And I'm wondering if is there a capacity issue with shortening the amount of time that it takes to get some of these projects completed in order to beat inflationary pressures that we might anticipate in the future? Would there be any savings with adjusting timelines of projects?
Madam Mayor, Council President, are you, are you, let me just say it back, by if we could deliver our projects faster, would we would experience longer term savings?
Are we, are we more likely to, to meet our goals within the money that we've bonded for? If we finish projects maybe quicker than we previously planned for? And what are the constraints around finishing projects earlier than planned?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council President, we're, it, those two things are in a bit of tension where if we stretch things out, we do have the potential for higher future value costs, certainly. The other side of that though, is doing more sooner does require for a different kind of early financial, early, early rates and early change that is, is not, was not anticipated in how this financial plan was set up. So there are pressures also in trying to do more sooner. And our focus has been on both, where can we reasonably extend some of the timelines? And also work together on some financial certainty around what, how can we be more predictive? With all of this uncertainty, how could we be more predictive and what is in the long-term capital plan? So that we could do both the, the capital planning and kind of strategic planning and water renewal in a way that we can also fund in a predictable way. So I don't know, that's a little bit of different way of looking at it. It's, there are challenges both ways on both speeding things up and extending them out.
Thank you.
Wanted to add this in here, certainly this is a place that would warrant potentially a different conversation. But balanced with that, we do have current affordability programs within our utilities, both one-time emergency assistance and also a hardship discount. More importantly, working with the, the mayor and other utilities in the valley right now on coordinating and looking at new approaches to that. And certainly that would be an area for bringing back additional updates in the future. All right, two more slides. So I promised you last time I would continue to tell you what else was coming your way. These are the upcoming contracts that will be before council in the next, you know, several months to a year, really reflecting those projects that I just talked about. So we've been utilizing a collaborative delivery approach with our construction, with our contractors. And what that allows us to do is break the work into smaller packages and, and launch some of those for delivery sooner. So you'll see some early packages when you see GMP, that's the guaranteed maximum price that we negotiate with a contractor. And then that will come to you all as a contract for approval. So as we kind of break these out, you'll see things for some of that early equipment procurement, some of the early site construction work, and then some of the larger investment once the design is done. Another benefit of being able to break these into smaller packages is it does allow the construction manager to build packages in a way that our local construction contractors and local market can access those as well. So with West Boise, we'll have a handful coming here in the near term. With Lander Street, we're underway on a big part of that construction. And then you'll see the next big GMP next year. And then you'll see the next big GMP next year and recycled water close on the contract, the pre-construction contract with that contractor coming this summer as well. And then finally, as we're in the budget build for fiscal years 26, the the rate recommendation for water renewal for FY26 is 9.9%. That's in alignment with the financial plan and that long term strategy that was built as a part of the bond issuance in that financial plan. And on an average water use kind of rate, this brings the new monthly residential rate for water renewal to around $58 per month. And with that, any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and last but not least, welcome, Mike. And Mike Andrews is here with us for a forestry update.
I have my presentation, but I just don't, oh, there it is, thank you. Okay. Yes, thank you for having me. My name's Mike, Madam Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. My name's Mike Andrews, I'm the city forester, we're a small division in the Parks and Rec Department. And I was really excited to come here and talk to you a little bit about forestry. I I like to start with, we exist, we are, we are a division. I'm sure a lot of people in here know that, being the City of Trees, but um, I think there's so many different entities and agencies that take care of trees here in the in the city that I like to let people know that we have a forestry division in Parks and Rec. So start with myself. I'm the city forester, I'd like to tell everybody I'm their favorite city forester, there's only one. But it is in city code actually to that the city of Boise is required to have a city forester that oversees all of the public trees. And some of the main things that we do, we we maintain a community forestry management plan. We oversee plantings, maintenance, removals, tree protection, pretty much anything that you can think of that's involved with the labor of taking care of trees, we do. And we administer our public outreach and education. So it's a big one for us, even if it's not a public tree per se, it's somebody calling with a private, calling with a private tree concern. We will generally help them out as best we can. So who we are? We are 10 strong and we take care of 85,000 public trees. That number came from the most recent canopy assessment that we had done. That was in 2024, so just last year. And what we had done to the city of Boise is we had LiDAR, a LiDAR survey taken of the entire city. And they were able to determine how many woody plants existed that were over four inch diameter and 15 feet in height. So this was important because when thinking of areas like our riparian zones that are that are technically in the public spaces, we didn't really have a good estimate prior to last year to just how many trees were in our riparian zone. So this was, so that's a fairly good accurate number, 85,000, which is a lot. But we have 10 full time staff at forestry, we are all certified arborists. This means that every single person on staff has spent at least three years underneath, working underneath a certified arborist and they passed an exam through the International Society of Arbiculture, which oversees all of our certifications. We have two, or sorry, we have five field arborists and one crew chief, and they do the labor of tree care. We have two tree inspectors and they take care of every single request that comes in through the city of Boise as well as take on a lot of the education and outreach portion of what we do. And they also partake in some of our proactive practices, which includes working with contractors to complete some of the tree care in the city of Boise. And we have a nursery manager, very unique, actually. I get to occasionally go around the country to different conferences and trainings. And we are unique in that we have a nursery and it is, it's a huge asset to our program. I want, I do want to highlight that every single person, including myself, we deal a lot with reactive work. I think I'm going to touch on that on the next slide here, but the field arborists, the crew chief, the tree inspectors, we are a very, very reactive bunch. We'd love to be a little more proactive and I will highlight some of the proactive stuff we do. But every single person on our staff is very much involved in responding to requests daily from the public. What I like to tell people is that we have influence on every public tree and it ranges. I'll go as I'll mention trees in our right away areas. So if people are not familiar with, you know, those right away areas, the space between the sidewalk and the curb, we actually do manage all of those trees. And we do, I guess, scrutinize and take care of those a little bit more than say trees in our riparian zone. So there's a a wide range of work that we do to trees depending on where they're located. So trees that are located in the right away, that's where we take our most proactive approach. As you can imagine, these are some of our oldest trees. I think about the north end, the east end, there's a lot of valuable assets that are located close to these trees, cars, houses, people, you name it. So we have a seven year pruning cycle in the city of Boise. And so that includes, so technically, once every seven years, a tree that's located in the public right away will be inspected by one of our tree inspectors. It will be assigned a pruning code based on that inspection and it'll be pruned by a contractor. We have the city broken up into seven districts. It's not really associated with neighborhood associations or anything. It's it was a, it was a map that was created long before my time, but we tried to divvy up essentially the trees evenly amongst the city. We have over 100 developed parks. For the most part, what we do in there is we will respond to emergencies or hazards as needed. And then we have the Boise River Greenbelt, the float route, the riparian areas. We respond to emergencies there, we do help the fire department cleaning up the river. You know, the Greenbelt is an area that is highly used throughout the the entire year. And we don't necessarily right now have a proactive approach to inspecting and pruning, but we are reactive on the Greenbelt. I do want to highlight, so some of those things we do with our community partners. We, I specifically work a lot with Planning and Development Services to do plan review. So anything that, you know, any landscape plan that is proposed, species, any trees that are being removed, we or myself and the forestry team, we we can have recommendations over what happens to those trees and we do seek mitigation for tree loss. I collaborate often with CCDC and ACHD Idaho Power. I mean Idaho Power and ACHD, they specifically those two agencies, they actually have crews and contractors that will prune on city trees. And so trying to coordinate and private trees, whatever it might be, would, you know, for Idaho Power. But essentially, it is a weekly occurrence where we're trying to coordinate our efforts with pruning, trying not to overlap, trying to make sure that we're all doing good tree care. So we're all watching out for each other, we're watching out for the contractors that we're hiring. It's a really good partnership. And then the community engagement part is really big. I think some of you are familiar with the Elaine Clague City of Trees Challenge that started in 2020. It's a tree planting initiative and the hope is to plant 100,000 trees in Boise city limits in a 10 year span. And we also had a seedlings component, or should say a saplings component to this in Boise forests. And that has actually already been completed. We were hoping to, in a 10 year period, plant 235,000 saplings in Boise forests, or sorry, Idaho forests near Boise. And we completed that goal in 2024. The Treasure Valley Canopy Network is the main nonprofit that we work with on the City of Trees Challenge as well as other education and outreach opportunities. They are a a very valuable partner in that they actually assist myself with having influence and planting trees on private property. And I can get into that a little bit more if anyone asks questions. Wood product sales, maybe some people, some of you don't know this, but we actually at forestry, we sell mulch and wood. And so any, you know, any tree that's removed or pruned, those wood chips will come back to our yard and we will sell those chips after they are processed through a tub grinder. I can talk a little bit more about that if anyone has wood sales, but we do sell wood products at our at our shop. Forestry and Fire Management mitigation, I will just briefly touch on this. I will admit that community forestry, we don't generally take the lead on anything fire mitigation wise, but we assist in every way you could think. If they need help with the actual physical labor of cutting, we will help. They need help with, you know, work identifying a contractor to work with, facilitating a contract, we will do that. We will go out and identify species of trees for them, whoever requests our services. We maintain the riparian areas. I know there's been some fires along the Greenbelt over the last few years. We've helped the fire department with clearing some areas that they had identified as potential hazardous areas for fire mitigation. So what does this work mean? We have been a Tree City USA for 47 years. That means that we have dedicated staff to taking care of our trees. We have a budget dedicated to tree care, we celebrate Arbor Day, we have a tree inventory. There's a certain criteria that essentially every Tree City USA needs to have, and we fit all that criteria. I will also add that we've received the Growth Award, which is specific to education and outreach for 28 years through Arbor Day Foundation. And then this is our sixth year as a Tree City of the world. And we were one of the first 20 cities, one of the first, yeah, 20 cities in the US to receive that acknowledgement. Our everyone knows about the canopy, I'm sure I could go talk about how great it is, it cleans the air, how much it benefits everybody. You know, it helps clean the water. There's really, there's even more benefits to trees that are coming out. It seems like every year more studies about our mental and emotional health, living in a a city with it with a really nice canopy. So it's important. Our community forestry team members, their stewards, I mean, they, again, they're all certified arborists, they care about the the urban canopy. And I'm really proud to say that they're all certified arborists. Our outreach and education efforts, those are some of the most important things that we do. Like I said, a lot of times from, I'll say this, from what we estimate or what was estimated prior to the City of Trees challenge starting, we estimated that we, the city can only have control over about 20% of the overall canopy, tree canopy in the city of Boise. The other 80% is all located on private property. So when I'm talking about education and outreach, I'm trying to educate the public on, you know, planting the right tree, right place, right purpose. Because we want to see everybody invest time, you know, people are going to invest time and money in planting a tree. So we want it to be there for a long time. And then the zoning code requirements, so with the new development code, there are a few things that were changed in that development, development code that helped the the tree, the canopy, specifically the the minimum right away width. So that area between the curb and the sidewalk, the new minimum is eight feet wide, which is very helpful for planting a tree. Prior to that, I think it was six feet. And prior to that, some of those older neighborhoods who I feel really bad for have a lot of maturing trees in a four foot wide space and it's destroying all the infrastructure around them. And that's really tough because you're in a tough spot. You're never going to have a a spot in the right away where a tree can actually get to maturity and live a long time. So in the future, I didn't realize that forestry was going to get a shout out earlier in the safety presentation, but I mentioned that we do have a seven year pruning cycle, but it's only for the right away trees. So again, that means once every seven years, a tree in the right ways is being looked at, it's being inspected, it's being assigned a pruning code. And we are having our contractors go prune that. We do not do that at all for our parks or our green belt. And that is just as simple, as simple as we just don't have the capacity to do so. Any of our proactive work, I'll say this, our our in-house crew does a really good job at keeping up with all of the reactive work that comes in. But in order to maintain that that level of proactiveness, I think we we could, you know, we could have a, I could see another tree inspector happening out with that, but also maybe some contracting dollars. And then I I highlighted this, I'm pretty sure a request was made for these positions and that was with the help of risk and safety. I, again, I didn't realize they were going to be presenting today and they would give us a shout out, this ties in really well. But yeah, it is a, it is a thing that I think that I have spoken to risk and safety about for years, trying to take a more proactive approach. And I think we are in a good spot now, it's where we're making it ask this year for that. And then very quickly, through the Elaine Clague City of Trees Challenge, I mentioned that we're close to 20,000 trees today. Some of you are probably running the numbers in your head, that is very far away from 100,000, which is our goal, and we are on year five. But I think what we've been doing really well with that initiative is getting the word about 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 planting trees. We've been holding a lot of education sessions, trainings, we've done plenty of tree giveaways. I actually did just look up, the city Seattle also has a a tree planting program and they haven't even planted that many trees in 20 years. So what we're doing right now is really fantastic, the 100,000 tree goal was always going to be a steep climb to get to. And then on top of that, some of the questions about for some of the funding that our nonprofit partners had at one time and now have lost. I think some of those questions are just making the achieving that 100,000 goal a little more difficult. But nevertheless, it's been, it's been really great having that, starting that planting initiative for our division. And I'll end with this, I think every single one of those bullets I went through could probably be its own half hour presentation. So I tried to get through it as fast as I could and I am hopeful that you all have some questions about community forestry.
Mike, this is a great presentation, thank you so much. It's, it really helps us to understand all the work that that's going on today and the work that needs to go on to get us from the reactive to the proactive, especially as we're looking at those two positions that are being requested in this next budget cycle. Can you, talking on those two positions, can you tell where they're looking to be bucketed for those? And then if if you had your endless pot of money, how many positions would you think are needed within forestry?
Madam Mayor, Council Member, that's a great question. So the the two positions that we were asking for, one is a tree inspector position and one is a arborist position. So a field arborist, I mentioned there were five, that would take us from five to six and field arborists. And that would take our number of tree inspectors from two to three. And that is actually the the staff that we had about eight years ago. We had a shift in our Parks and Rec Department and some hard decisions were made and some positions, positions were shifted at the time. And so forestry ended up losing two positions. So going, the addition of these two staff members would actually be bringing the staff back to where it was eight years ago. But and the tree inspector will take on a role of doing a lot of the proactive inspections. So thinking about the parks and the green belt where we don't do it, if we had an additional tree inspector, that would actually allow us to do that on the seven year pruning cycle. And then the additional field staff member is a great addition as well because a lot of tree crews work in threes. And right now we have five. And so it's actually an awkward split, just thinking about the realistic day to day work of going and do, going and doing a tree removal or tree pruning. If we had an additional tree member, we could routinely split into two crews, which right now we can't do very often. And then if I had a number, I probably, I like the idea of doing an additional tree inspector. I also like the idea of even increasing the field staff a little more. Yeah, so it'd be more like two four person crews.
Madam Mayor, a couple more questions. With with the addition of the two additional staff members, do you see us still contracting out with outside organizations to help us with the work?
Madam Mayor, Council Member, yes, I do, yes, no doubt. And our current budget for contracting out work is is good this year. It actually went up in prior years, we were falling behind, but now we are actually at a good spot. But I would anticipate that if we did increase the amount of inspections But I would anticipate that if we did increase the amount of inspections that we were able to do, we would still need some additional funding, contract dollars wise.
And Madam Mayor, follow-up. My district in West Boise is, within that heat map that we have, there's a lot of red. A lot of it is on commercial side of things and not necessarily residential. And would love to talk to you some other time or get some recommendations on how we can help with this, with other, on the commercial side of things to help green up those areas, maybe best practices or, you know, how, how do we go out and help convince them that we need some more greenery in these areas? So I guess the question is, if you have best practices or is something to help commercial people, commercial properties green up, I'd love to see those. And if you're open to a meeting sometime, just to discuss that further.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, I would, I would love to meet up and chat about that. Best practices, you know, that I mentioned the development code and some of the, the new things that were put in there. I did mention the, the right-of-way and the spacing, but there was another update with parking lots. I think prior to the new development code, parking lots were kind of just all over the place. The spacing wasn't fantastic, thinking about putting trees in the middle of a parking lot. I think the, the width for planting has increased with that as well. So we're, when I'm doing plan review and I'm thinking about landscape plans, especially areas that have big parking lots or industrial areas, I am looking specifically at the spacing, the, the actual space available for planting trees.
Yep, Madam, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mike. This was awesome. We were really excited at Community Forest, Forestry here. You do exist and it's actually great. The Modern Zoning Code's like 600 pages, right? And Community Forestry has got a few shout-outs in there too. So, and I think that is somewhat unique and probably something that wasn't talked about a ton. I know it, I know it was mentioned when prior council adopted the Modern Zoning Code. But you alluded to it, uh, community requests, I think is kind of what you called them as you've gotten them. And I'm curious, with the Modern Zoning Code specifically providing ways for landowners, developers to work with community forestry to figure out the best solutions for trees, have you seen an uptick in those kinds of, types of requests? Was there already a good system on your end to handle this kind of flow? And now with the Modern Zoning Code, are you engaging with planning in a different way? Have you seen any kinds of differences or things that you're still working on because of the impact of that code?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, admittedly, the flow of the work and how we, and how I specifically work with developers or any type of plan hasn't changed that much. I will say that the, working with our design review committee and planning and zoning has been excellent. They have been really pushing for, or they really strongly support any of the recommendations that myself or anybody in our forestry team makes. So I'm super grateful for all that support. But yeah, no, the, the process, it's funny, the, the process itself has pretty much stayed the same. And in fact, prior to the new development code, I would even make recommendations that would say, we need to increase the space to plant here or we need to do this. And it just wasn't supported by the development code. So I guess the process hasn't changed, but now with the new language, I think are like our planning and zoning and design review committees, they can accept those recommendations that maybe myself or someone from, from forestry will make because they're in there now, which is really nice.
So perhaps a little bit of the inverse too, of now the expectations are clear in the code for people that are working on these things and you're not having to, to be there bringing up new information essentially to someone. Great. I just, one other question and also just kind of call out, appreciated you mentioning those wits on street trees. And, you know, having lived at home with a very narrow script, those are, those are really unhealthy for those trees. I'm so excited about that, about that improvement in the code. But had a question, unrelated, separate question. You talked about community partners, working with them. Ada County, are they responsible for Barber Park area? That specific area is actually technically District Five over here, but just on the border. Curious if that's, that's an area that you're involved in as well.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes, yes, we are. So Ada County, they have Barber Park, which they do take care of. And there is a fairly large section, I mean, the, the amount of land that Barber Park actually encompasses and how far it goes is quite extensive. And they, they do have some sections of Greenbelt that are actually across the river that they maintain. But for the most part, we will just collaborate on taking care of any reactive work that may occur. We have helped Ada County Parks out with some of their tree problems. I've given them recommendations on who to communicate with when they've had a, they had a, a pest issue with some of their pine trees. And so it's, again, it's, it's a, it's a funny group, the forest, the arborists in town. We kind of all know each other and, and especially if there's other agencies like Ada County or even ACHD or like Idaho Power, like I mentioned. If it's tree related, we all kind of like ping ideas off each other, which is really nice. So, but Ada County Parks, yes, will, other than the few times we've helped with tree work and maybe giving recommendations, I have teamed up with them on a few different trainings before, safety-related trainings and educational trainings.
Well, thank you so much for all your efforts over there. That is a very important piece of recreational property out there for neighbors. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very much. Yep. And now we need a motion for exact.
Yes, the moment. Madam Mayor, per certain title code, section 742061F, I move to enter executive session to communicate with legal counsel on pending probable litigation.
Second, uh, we have motion second clerk.
Corliss.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. We will be back at six.